Okay, we are live and recording right now.
Okay.
So now we're gonna watch cartoons.
Now I know what Patrick does.
That was on, that was on. That was recorded.
Trying to swallow.
I waited, paid for the purpose.
Toons.
Picking up a different, picking up a different team.
Thanks, they're just in the best right to work, they're not part of the official uniform.
No tunes today?
No.
Henry, get the rake, we're going duck hunting.
Alright, okay, we'll open our meeting by, um, we have a selectmen, reviewing our minutes, we have a selectmen's, held a selectmen's meeting on Wednesday, August twenty first at three o'clock, could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We're back on again.
He's second.
Second?
I'll second.
I got it.
No. All in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready to open the meeting in about an hour.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I said. There you go. Our first order of business is the trustees of the trust fund appointment.
In your packet, back in August, I was notified from Tom Garfield that Thomas Goulet is relocating to Laconia, so he will no longer fill his residency requirements in order to be a trustee of the trust fund. Uh, they had their feelers up to some potential, um, people in the community that they felt would are potential candidates who reside in Belmont, who they felt would be, um, good to serve as a trustee of the trust fund. Uh, they met with those candidates and they ultimately brought forward Eric Johnson. Uh, in your, in your packet is a letter of intent slash interest from, from Eric.
I saw Eric on Saturday, he actually was on the school board and I served with him on the first, um, the first go around with the, um, separation of Canterbury Belmont meeting, that was the year before you. And, um, I saw him on Saturday and he said he had submitted his name, I believe he's also a principal in Laconia.
He used to be, I think he still might be.
Yes, he is, I, I can't remember which, Elm Street School.
Yeah, he was at the middle of school for a while then he went.
Yep, yep, he's at the Elm Street School and is very active in, at Saint Joseph's, so, um, I'll make a motion to, um, accept Eric as a trustee of the trust fund appointment. Second? We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposition? Hearing none, Eric has that appointment and I believe, while Jen isn't here, I believe he's planning to come in late this afternoon to be sworn in because there is a meeting this evening, I believe.
Correct, and just to note for the record, his term will expire March of twenty five, is that's when Tom's term expires, so then if he wishes to serve further, he'll have to go on the March ballot to fill that, um, appointments, um, there. And yes, Jen is at the office, I have the ability to swear him in, so.
If he comes in.
I told them I'll even, I'll email him so that he can be sworn in and then attend to the trustee meeting then as of his happy Sunday at four.
Awesome, alright, um, trash and recycling cart notice to residents.
I will let Colleen take this one.
I love it.
You have a lovely letter in your packet, uh, in many of your own Facebook, um, this was put on Facebook as well, we got some flat for this, but I will let, um, Colleen kind of explain the reasoning behind it.
Yeah, um, so Craig came in a while ago and talked to me about problems with the garbage cans feeding the way of the sidewalk. People are walking out into the road sometimes to get around cans. If somebody had a wheelchair or a walker or something, they wouldn't necessarily be able to do that. It's also an even bigger issue in the wintertime when there's plow, somebody has to go out in front of all the plowing and move all these carts, which is just manpower and time and money for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Craig asked if we could do something about it, notify people, we worked with Cessna, we came up with the notice to go out to everyone, that you can't place the carts in the sidewalk, you can't impede pedestrians or cars. Um, Craig just found carts out in the roadway, so that people have to actually drive into the other lane traffic.
Well, I was behind a car and almost witnessed a head-on last week, I couldn't believe that, yeah.
Uh, so we, we put this notice out as much as possible, I believe it's also gonna be in the newspaper.
Uh, with your permission, we want to also put a small little short version of this in the newspaper as well.
Mm-hmm.
So it's been publicized and then this week Craig and his crew have started tagging problem carts. So yesterday alone, there were twenty-two carts that were tagged and they were on Eaton Circle, Woodland Drive, Lynda Drive, Judither Drive, Horseshoe Drive, Arlene Drive, Sunshine Drive, Silkwood Avenue and Diane Drive. So those were all carts that were out in the roadway and in the way.
Do you think some people are doing that because they think that maybe the machine can't get them if they're not, I mean, some of them are a little excess, but I wondered that too, but, yeah.
Could be, I think a lot of people just find it more convenient to put them where they want to put them and now they're.
And don't think, yeah.
I mean, that, that, and, and I believe, um, initially when we were going through all the garbage can debate and everything else.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I believe that it said that that arm will, will reach like eight to that.
Oh, yeah, that thing's got some reach to it.
It's got some reach, so, there's absolutely.
And, and I'll be honest with you, I was, I, not, I didn't, I mean, I had, my driveway's wide enough, but I thought, am I putting it out close enough to the road, you know what I'm saying? And then after watching it, cause I guess I missed it maybe the first couple, then, then I realized, oh yeah, that thinking, I don't have to put it right on the road, beside the road, so to speak, so.
It's definitely not gonna suck, cause I watched them today, they dropped mine even further back than I put it, so, they're making sure they put them back.
Back, yeah.
And it's just gotten to a certain point with the safety issue, I mean, I literally, um, witnessed a head-on almost last.
No, I did, I did, I couldn't believe it.
I was on duty, I was behind a car and the car goes out in the road and it.
Nobody wants a wave.
Almost a crash.
Sure.
And to be honest with you, like, like Colleen said, in the wintertime, we have the sidewalk traffic coming in, and all the carts are in, you know, so I'll personally go down, it takes me forty-five minutes to an hour, I'll be moving carts out of the sidewalk, people looking out their window. They realize what I'm doing and then they.
Just do the same thing.
Just do the same thing, so it's, it's got to a point where just, we have to just.
So where do the people on Main Street, right out here, where do they put the cart?
They can put them in, they can put them on the sub lawn, they can't put them in the parking spot.
Put it on the, on the lawn prior?
We have certain areas that are, um, stamped, the gray areas, they can put them there as long as they're not in a parking spot. Or they can, I mean, they can put them in the driveway.
I've, I've seen the traffic congestion because they, they've got them in the road.
Yes.
And the pe, it's a basic, it's pretty tight two lane, you gotta track the trailer coming, it's pretty tight for.
Sure.
A car and if you got a garbage can in the roadway.
But to be honest with you, everybody's gonna drive, the problem is, if they put them in their driveway, it's inconvenient for them. Then they would have to, so.
They gotta move them to get out or.
Exactly, and I understand that, but I mean, it's just, it's got to a point where it's, I think it's a, you know, church, church street.
Church, yeah.
Um, those kids are walking on that sidewalk and the, the road is narrow, you've got the traffic trailers coming up there Mondays and Fridays and.
So how are you gonna sol, how are you gonna solve this problem?
So this week we're putting out the initial notice, we're writing down all the addresses that we put, uh, the notices on. Next week we'll give a second notice, we'll have a different colored sheet saying this is the final notice, you got to do something. Um, and then after that, the list is gonna go to Cessna and they're just not gonna pick up the trash. So, and when they don't get their trash picked up.
Then they're gonna call Colleen.
They'll call me, you know, we'll.
And the board has the option also of finding people per what's in our ordinance. And that would be up to your discretion.
I mean, I still have to talk to two or three people today and they just, they just didn't know. So I think, I think it's a matter of just.
Some more education.
Communicating with people and, and trying to solve the problem, showing age.
Yep.
And this is kind of the way we have to be.
Because they're not typically, they're not home maybe when you show up, they've already done their trash and whatever, so, alright. Alright, Colleen can handle that, right?
Are you okay with us putting a small ad in the paper, just to.
Yeah, I think so, just, you know, then no one can say we have a discounted.
If we do have to start finding, they can't say that we didn't try to exhaust every effort to.
Right.
Get it in the public.
Well, and if we're going out and, and tagging, individually tagging, we're taking the time to educate people and, yeah.
And I have dudes drive around like school streets works, these kids, these kids are walking on school street and every one of those trucks get sprayed with the sidewalk, I mean, it's just.
Oh, you have to walk, have a sidewalk into the street?
Yeah, alright.
That's not what the sidewalks design for.
No, no, okay, our next item is permission to pave public road request.
I want to invite Karen and Craig and then we have Mr. Chris Bouchard.
Yes, sir.
If you wanna come forward as well, um, so in your packets, um, Mr. Bouchard has come forward because they, as you might have heard and or may have seen, um, they have brought that, um, over by the beach, there was that red building, our house. Um, they have some, purchased the property, um, have torn it down and are rebuilding, um, a new house there and their request here is to pave the portion of Leslie Roberts Drive. I don't know if Craig or Karen or if Bouchard's gonna come forward too, to discuss.
Alright, well, since everybody's jumping in all at once.
So Mr. Bouchard had requested, uh, to pave, now he, he is also separately, has a separate paving for what is currently Horse Point Road, which is also the next thing on your list, um, to pave that piece of it, that's a private road, it also serves as part of his driveway to his home.
So that's not, has nothing to do with the town, well, other than, right, yeah.
His request is to pave Leslie Roberts Drive, which if you all kind of remember from earlier this year was, we were, we were back and forth, is it a limited access right away, is it a class five road, it's been determined that it is a class five road moving forward. His request is to pave from, there's a small portion paved from where Route Three intersects, from that point down to where Horse Point Road intersects Leslie Roberts Drive, that's his request to pave it. Now, I know Craig and I have had some conversations.
Yeah, we've got a couple of conversations, um, so I'd like to first say that I'm not against this at all. I'm just, I wanna see it done correctly, that's all. So, um, Chris called my office, or the DPW office on June twenty eighth, it was Friday afternoon, when we weren't available, so I returned his call and I think it was Monday or Tuesday, um, I never, and I left him a message because he, he kind of, he kind of said, you know, he was interested in doing this and I left him a message and said, I'm not against it, but we should have a conversation. I don't, now to be honest with you, I don't remember exactly what I said, but I said, you know, it would have to be done to town standards and.
Towns backs, yeah.
We should get together, have a conversation and, you know, I mean, I, I was questioning suitable materials in the road because the road gets muddy in the spring, as, I mean, John and Sunny have commented on this to me before about how muddy the beach road gets, so that's only, that's my only concern is, you know, I think, and you, you've read my mail, so, I mean, I think that, you know, I think, he said his paving company, you know, said that the material.
Throwing pavement down on unsuitable, unsuitable material is only a bandaid.
They, they said it was suitable, but I mean, how did they, how did they, how did they determine that? You know, did they, you know, if it's something the town was gonna do, we would go maybe fifty feet, we would do a test dig and we'd see what kind of materials it is.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, so, like I said, I'm not against it, but I don't wanna rush into it, I don't, I think it oughta be done, I think it oughta be done to town standards and.
No ifs and buts.
Yeah.
And there was two, two portions of the concern, one was just obviously the under, what's underneath, because originally that road was intended as a limited access.
Just a dirt road.
Yeah, it was a.
Round road to the beach.
Round access.
It was in, it was in our sand and during the, the good weather, you got down to the beach, so.
Cause it wasn't used in the winter.
Exactly, so.
Basically, and believe me, I'm, I'm sure, I'm not the only one, they got phone calls and complaints and whatever.
Of the condition.
Yeah, yeah.
The other, the other portion of it is the fact the paving, um, I know we've talked, to the railroad tracks is what, you know, we would kind of suggest because if you stop where he's talking at, at Horse Point, that intersection, you're gonna have water flowing unfettered, grabbing sand and whatever else is there and then basically laying it into the, you know, different railroad tracks.
It's gonna be, that seventy-five foot section's not gonna be an easy section to maintain, so, and honestly, I think, I mean, I know you're particular, you're, you're bossy and, and I am too, and I think paving of the tracks would just, would make, give it a more finished, you know, it would give it like a stopping point, like that's where it kinda should stop, that's all, so, like I said, I'm not against it, I just think, you know, we get together and, and like Brian and I discussed, we're, we're more than willing to work with you on this, we can go out and do some, do some test digs and see what the material's like and we can go from there, you know, we're totally not against this, I mean.
And I think originally when, and again, I, I don't, can't even remember how long it's been there, it's been there a while and obviously it was a path to the town beach.
Yeah.
That's what it was, alright, so I don't, I don't think anybody knows what the materials are there.
Exactly, I mean.
Um, it's, to me it sounds like it can be kind of a wet spot, but again, I don't, you know, I'm, I don't go to the town beach, I'm sorry.
So, so you.
I've only been there twice, I think.
So are you up again, are you against bringing it up to town standards, is, is?
No, I'm not up against it at all, that's why the, uh, paving company offered a five-year written warranty on it because they, they weren't concerned about it at all, but doesn't matter, it was free tape.
So Craig, could you, what if you worked with this gentleman?
I know, but he wants to do it two weeks, or next week, Sunny.
Oh, oh, I see.
So, I mean, if we would have, if we would've had a discussion back in June and we could've gotten together and, and done this and, you know, I'd really, I'd really like to see, you know, to make sure that those materials are suitable and if it needs to be boxed out and it needs to be, you know.
Oh, it needs to be done right, that's for sure.
Exactly, and that's my only concern, I mean, honestly, five-year warranty is great, but, you know, the town's gonna own that for a hundred fifty years, so.
So what's.
So what happens?
Before forever, so.
So if, 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 if we gave him permission to put some pavement down, it's not our pavement, we don't have to maintain it?
No.
No, we have.
Oh, it's our road.
It's a class five road.
Okay, so once that pavement goes down, no matter what, it's our road, so what could happen, I'm not saying it's going to, so what could happen, I've seen this in, kind of, another gentleman that used to come in and do some development and five years from now, we're out there having to totally redo the road as the rocks are coming up through or the waters, whatever. Um, so basically, whatever he does, it's ours. So for us to give you permission, that's my, this is me, alright, I'm not speaking, but for, for me to give you permission to put pavement down on an uns- uh, unsuitable at this point, because we don't know. Undetermined, okay, undetermined, cause it might be suitable. Undetermined where, where, we're owning, taxpayers of town of Belmont are now owning a road that we don't really know is gonna hold up for five years, what.
And another concern I had, you know, there's gonna be a lot of construction, you're gonna put, you know, this is the beginning of the project, there's.
Oh, there's more things going on.
There's proposed, there's proposed more buildings, so that's gonna be more truck traffic and what we usually do, I mean, up on, um, Grimstone Wild Acres, we've basically, um, secured some monies.
A bond.
When the project is finished, we put the final coat of asphalt on.
Got it.
So my, my recommendation would be to like maybe put, if when we do this and you still have development going on, we put, we put a base coat of asphalt on and then when the project is, is complete, we dress it up, put the boat dye on, make it look good.
Base po, base coat, or you put a, a good coat?
Two and a half, we put two and a half.
Or you put the proper dirt material down until it's done and then, then pave it so that, um, it doesn't destroy it?
Materials are good, I would, I would have no objections on putting like the two, the two and a half inch base coat on a twenty-one foot wide road, just like we have for Aspects. And then, uh, when the project is done.
And you put a top coat.
Put a top coat on, but I really, I really suggest that we go to the railroad tracks just to, to make it finished and, and, um. Go from there.
So if I may.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate, this is a town-owned road.
Yeah.
That a private resident is coming forth to pave that, it's done. When it is done, we own the road.
Right.
We own the maintenance on the road.
Right.
That is why it's the DPW director's.
Yes.
Recommendation that is because it's a town road, it needs to be brought up to town spec. That determination has not been made.
Right.
Or proven to Craig.
Yeah.
When it does, then he will give you a recommendation whether you should or should not allow the resident to pa, uh, pave the road.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we didn't get this letter until last week, so, and they want to, they're proposing to pave next week, so.
Yes, sure.
That is on enough time for you to say, yes, go ahead and pave it without, like, having proved that it's been suitable material.
Could we make a motion to allow it depending on the suitability approval by Craig?
Well, we've gotta get out there and, and do, do test digs and if he's gonna tie into where I go with the town, where I'd like to see him tie in and Karen in agreement with me to the railroad tracks, I think there's, there's gotta be some type of permit to be able to do that, so, I don't know how long that, that would take or what it would take to do that, but, um, the railroad tracks, the railroads, railway in the state are both gonna have to be notified because you really don't do anything within that fifty-foot right away with railroad without, I mean, without.
And I know.
That's six, that's six months. I don't, I, I'm not sure, you're gonna get a TUA and. Yeah. That's gotta go in front of the governor council and it's a process.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that.
Well, maybe we could just table this until you get more information on the situation so that, uh, it'll give this gentleman time and you Craig to work together.
Well, I re, I recommend we, like I, yeah, exactly, that's fine.
I think, I, okay, Travis.
Sorry, as, could I ask Mr. Bouchard on, uh, why you wanna pave it right now, would you guys are still working up there?
Cause we are doing the binder coat next week, we're doing just a base coat this year, next year we'll be doing the top coat. We just wanted to get the base coat down, you know, it's good to let it sit for a year.
But the problem is by putting the base coat down, not knowing, truly, our public works direction doesn't know what is underneath that, we're still covering up what might be an issue, alright, and again, if.
If we address this, if we address the road base this year.
Let it settle, put a good base down.
During the freeze thaw, we would be able to determine how it would hold up for many use in the future.
I mean, I know, that means, that means.
Then we could just put a base force on that, you could get your railroad, whatever, if you're not, if you're not objection, objection to that, so.
Yeah, and I think realistically, cause it, the, if they, speaking of, you know, putting it to spring, that gives you the six months or so to reach out to the railroad, see if you can, you know, if they're kind of on board and you get positive feedback, so, you know, I mean, it still may take a little time. It wouldn't prevent from obviously paving what is now known as Horse Point Road, you know, from that intersection up, so you can still do that por, portion of your project and then, kind of, you know.
And I'm not, and I have no objection.
Put the brakes on this.
I have no objection to working with you on this, so, I mean, we could do, I'm not so sure about the cost here or something, but we could, we could, we could supply some helpers, I mean.
Yeah, at this point, that's, you know, unfortunately for us, we're in a default budget, so at this point, our road, um, it, it's, it's.
We're doing the very minimum.
We're doing the very minimum, okay, and that's a real, you know, has kind of put the crimp on a lot of things in town, um.
But in the future, I mean, I, I definitely think it would benefit, it would benefit us.
Well, it's gonna benefit us, but it's also gonna benefit them because they're, they're not gonna want, um, you know, we, we want a safe road.
Yeah.
For everybody involved. And so, and there's gonna be more development in there, so.
There is a subdivision proposal that's moving through the process, so, you know.
So there is gonna be a lot of truck traffic and whatever.
Exactly, for the construction and things like that, so, you know.
And we have a standard that we put other developers through the minimum requirements.
Right, right.
And the big thing I see here is a railroad.
And let me just ask one other question while, you know, my, okay, is that if you're in there developing, and again, we put road bans on, and I believe that was an issue, was that an issue this past spring or wasn't there some?
Well, it, it, no, it wasn't so much an issue as we were still trying to determine what the status of that road was. Once it was determined it was a class five, then, you know, the, you know, the ban, the road ban could.
Okay.
Cover that road.
And obviously, I'm thinking forward to when the road bans go on, alright, but obviously, that is something you need to work out with our public.
Well, no, we've determined it's a class five road, they'll have to adhere to the road bans just like everybody else.
Alright, okay, alright, and that's what, what happened this past spring?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I take an issue with that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Log trucks use the trail system to come in and out of there this past, I mean, when that was being logged off to make the beautiful property that he has, they were using the walking trail to come out of there.
At the time, that was, that was, at the time, that was the legal access easement that the state of New Hampshire had with the, the Bouchards, with JCB for access to what was the Red House, which is now obviously the, now that entrance ceases to exist, they wouldn't be utilizing that at all, that's why the new, and actually we just got the punch list, there's a new baller to the truck traffic or any traffic can't go up that trail other than obviously emergency vehicles.
Well, that and they put a pipe in the middle of it.
Yeah, yeah, they put the baller, but it is, it's one of that, I don't know if it lays down or if it can be removed, I, I, I see where it can be removed, I didn't know if it was, was changed or not, I didn't get that close, for emergency vehicles, but that access doesn't exist anymore legally, that's why as you go down the beach road, the new access, the new front portion of Horse Point Road is farther down, it's much safer and that was part of the original, and that's where when we were determining if it was a class, if Leslie Roberts was a class five road, where all that kind of confusion came about first.
Alright.
Um, but like, like Craig said, we're not opposed to the project, but I think at this point in time, just slowing it, this piece of it down, determine if the road base is appropriate, get it through a freeze thaw, I mean, if, if there, if there's some.
Has there been any drainage put into that at this point? No, there's been, it's still the, it's still as it was existing.
Is this adequate ditching on the road?
Yeah.
The, the ditching is deep enough adequate, I believe.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's just what's in the road.
Yeah, we don't know.
It seems to be a real problem every spring with the mud and.
Yeah, because I, because the town didn't do that, I think, I think probably, that was all private, if I remember, probably Roberts.
Trouble defining if it was a class five road.
Sure, it was probably Leslie that built that in, I mean, I don't know, it's before.
I do.
Oh, was it Leslie that built it in, so it was a gentleman from town that the beaches.
He donated.
He donated it all, so we don't know what's there, for lack of a more, we don't, alright. Um, so, so, um, I guess we need a motion.
I, I, I'll make a motion to, uh, to deny the written request by Chris Bouchard to pay two hundred and sixty-foot portion of Leslie Roberts' drive, class five road, until it has been established that suitable subgrade material is in place.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, we denied, sorry.
The police work with Craig.
Yes. Uh, yeah, we're denying, but.
Confirm that and then bring, yeah, the feedback.
I'm not done while we're.
You're not done.
Yeah, no, we're not.
Guys be doing what you're doing up there though.
Yeah, it's awesome.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah, it'll be great.
I was just saying, I'm not gonna do it tomorrow because the next request, and actually, someone just might, might wanna come up.
The road name change?
The road name change.
Oh, that's a.
No, I'm just staying here.
Okay, oh, got it, alright.
Okay, in your packets, I believe you have a copy of the letter from Mr. Bouchard dated nine eleven, requesting permission to rename Horse Point Road to Naughty Way, K-N-O-T-T-Y.
Where's the horse, where, where did Horse Point Road come from? Where is that? Is that?
That's the driveway.
That's your driveway?
That's the original road that went down to the.
Oh, that's right, that was that.
A hundred years ago, there was a dock down there.
Yes.
And you could go from Pittsfield up on, on O seven, where my house was on three sixty-six, you go up over Duro Mountain, the top, right on the side of the mountain, you turn left and you came right on with the oldest house.
Yeah.
Is on Mile Hill.
Yeah.
And right down past that, there's a Somerville Trail still, that goes down, it comes right down to your property and they had steamboats that took food and fish that were flung up from the seacoast up to Meredith Center, going up the other end of the lake. There was a dock there, there's probably, remember it's still there.
So you don't like that name? See, now you're getting history here, okay.
I don't care about the name.
We have a request to change it from Horse Point to Naughty Way, I know we had some prior discussions about an earlier name, but again, when the road name changes, I reached out to NHMA because it was a little bit unclear with the changing of a private road name. Typically, private roads, as Horse Point is right now, are named at the time of subdivision, obviously this just kind of existed as.
Sure.
Private roads.
Yeah.
Reaching out to NHMA, they suggested that if you brought, of course, the selectmen, just, even though it's a private road, to acknowledge the name change if you're.
Because that has to do with nine one one.
That has to do with nine one one, that's why I, I've asked chief, chief to step up. The original, there was a, a different name that they had originally requested in talking to your contact with nine one one. It, there's something called, uh, what they, confusingly similar is the phrase that they use.
Okay.
And unfortunately, they determined that the first road name was considered confusingly similar, so they came forth with Naughty Way.
Okay.
You reached out to your contact and he basically said it's kind of in an unofficial, and told me they get a formal name change request, but unofficially it passes that confusing. You reached out to your contact and he basically said it's kind of in an unofficial, and told me they get a formal name change request, but unofficially, it passes that confusingly similar issue.
Okay.
And this would actually.
So the nice thing about if we were to change it to Naughty Way, I had told Chris that I'm not opposed to changing names, I just didn't want them like I initially, cause it was too close to something else.
Yeah.
However, Horse Shoe Road and Horse Point Road.
Oh, yeah, is pretty.
Are very.
Yeah.
Very close, and they're very close, and they're, they're in the same.
Proximity wise.
Proximity wise, so.
Oh, so somebody gets on that truck, they're gonna be heading to the, sure, sure.
Yes, so I would be more than happy to go through the process of changing it to something a little different and then something to that doesn't oppose or work with another name, so.
Yeah, okay, so we need a, I'll make a motion to approve the request, name change of Horse Point Road to Naughty Way. And then I assume you make whatever needs to be done with nine one one or whatever. Could I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it's now Naughty Way. That could be, you know, you could say that.
See the word play there, that was good.
That just hit me, I love it.
Do they need to do the, um.
I, I think that falls under your other business, we, do you want to just go over that one?
What's the other business?
Waiting for.
Well, sort of.
Other new business?
Yeah, your other new business, you have a private road, uh, the request for a municipal waiver, municipal liability, excuse me, for a private highway. Which is now known as Naughty Way, formerly known as Horse Point Road. This again, uh, typically when a, a house is built on a class six or a private road, they have to waive this liability. Not that we would ever expect because he's, he's very good at maintaining his roads and everything else, so it would be an issue, but for example, if we had a big snowstorm and they, he's in an ambulance, the ambulance can't get up there.
Oh, when he builds more homes.
Well, even his own home, but he's building his home right now, so to him, he would need the waiver, the liability, basically stating that if something happens and the road's not passable, the town will.
Oh. Okay. Alright. Yeah, we're not liable if we can't.
Can't get the ambulance up there or the fire truck.
These guys go through anything.
Well, so.
You'll keep it loud.
So you do have the application in front of you, does have some.
I have it here.
I was looking in my packet, couldn't find it.
Yeah, I couldn't find it either.
I thought, I thought it was in your packets.
Oh, okay.
We decide, send it around.
Alright.
The only thing I did notice is now that you've, now that they've approved the name change, I would suggest that your first two pages.
And we'll talk about.
Be changed.
The two pages that you executed stated Horse Point Road.
Formerly known as, or Naughty Way formerly known as, so you're gonna wanna change those pages.
Just so that, and we, we can just redo those two, first two pages.
Okay.
But yeah, basically, it would, it, you have, if you're gonna do this Horse Point, obviously, the name hadn't officially been changed at that point, okay?
The pages you're signing don't reference.
The first two.
The first page if you wanted to sign those and then they could work on the other pages.
The third page. Okay.
And then, and, and just as, just a point of information, we'll file basically the equivalent of a notice of decision at the registry of deeds. To indicate that Horse Point Road is now known as Naughty Way, so in the future, should somebody be researching and they used to know it as Horse Point Road.
Oh, sure, got it, cross-reference.
Cross-reference.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
There you go.
On, do we have any other?
We gotta spell that again?
Huh?
K N O T T Y.
Naughty, naughty. Um, do we have any other, um, new business?
No.
Alright, we'll move on to old business, facilities use policy and fee schedule.
Yes, in your packets, um, I have given you, uh, what Colleen and I have drafted as the facility use policy. I did give you guys all this last week, so you guys can really look it over, come with us. Any concerns and questions? I know John had kind of concerns about the mill and its use. Um, so you have the policy, which the policy outlines, um, you know, the general, um, the general guidelines for the pavilion and the mill. Um, you know, what you can and cannot do, um, talks about the deposit, the refunds, um, how to reserve, permitted uses, non-permitted uses. Um, them needing to get insurance if applicable, so, um, I thought that looked, um, very good. Um, the mill, um, kind of, the feedback that I had gotten from you guys was that you didn't really want it used for birthday parties and bachelorette parties or, um, baby showers or anything. That you really wanted to keep the mill used to community gatherings, recreational, cultural, like our favorite, or, um, um, historical, have, uh, meetings. Um, boards, committees, nonprofits, et cetera. So we kind of rechange that to state that, you know, there's no private events in the mill and there's no business use, um, in the mill. And that it's just for community gatherings, recreation and cultural activities, enrichment programs, shows and exhibits, social events, town use, school use. And we added that regularly, regular, weekly or monthly schedule meetings of community organizations and nonprofits with approval from the board and their authorized designee. As you all know, it's the future, hopeful future use of town hall, so as things change, um, you know.
We may have to change it a little bit. Yeah.
May change, but, um, we would still have these two rooms, or really limiting this room so this board meeting is only in that room across the hall. It's kind of the, the space you would have for all of those, um, people to use, um, right now. So that was that one, and then the only other thing was deciding on the fee schedule. Um, at our May meeting, we had decided to, um, make the pavilion rental a hundred and fifty dollars. Kind of looking at other towns and getting the feedback from some of the board members and to the public, we thought, well, maybe one fifty was too high. So we looked at what other towns were doing and, you know, it's kind of all over the place as to what towns are charging then. So Colleen and I had kind of thought, well, what if we did eighty dollars for the first two hours and then doing twenty dollars per hour, cause you do have most people who are only renting it for maybe an hour or two, just for a quick meeting. And is the one fifty really eighty, um?
Well, I think the other thing is, is that, this is a starting point, to me, this is a starting point, and we'll see how this works and see how much it takes our, um, you know, Patrick and his, um, one other person. To clean up after or whatever, I think a lot of it is how many out, what, how much time we, being the town employees, are gonna have to put into this, taking care of the trash, you know, that type of thing.
They have to put that in the dumpster already, that's.
Is it, is it? No, I think I did read that.
They have to do all, instead of, they have to do all the breakdown, so I think pretty much Patrick just does a quick check, says, hey, I'm.
But we all know how that, you know, so, it's a good starting point and it can always be changed. This isn't in gold, this isn't in stone. This is a good starting point.
It's also not part of the policy itself, so the board would be able to review and make changes.
Yeah.
Without having to go through the whole process of amending the policy.
Yeah, yeah, understood. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
About which part?
Any of it.
So I guess.
The whole packet or just the policy?
The policy is one thing, so I guess if you wanna just take the policy.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good with the policy.
Concerns with the policy.
I'm good with the policy.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
So then, um, what about the rental of the pavilion and those fees that we pro, that we proposed of amending the one fifty to the eighty for the first two hours and then twenty per hour after?
Well, my only question, what you have, before you get into that, the pricing of it, if they're having an event and it's outside, at what point do we require a policeman to be there and who pays them?
Well, I think that would be through the discussions of their application of them saying, you know, what kind of an event it is, is it.
But we, should we?
If it's an event that would require a police, I think that would be more of a special events application where that would kind of trigger, okay, police chief, they're gonna have a thousand people here. Do you, you need police.
Nowadays, I mean, if you have fifty, you might wanna have the police.
So.
I mean, he's gotta be part of it, it's gonna fall. Yeah, I understand.
Right, and they have to pay for the detail.
I just don't wanna have an oops, well, we didn't do this, we didn't remind these people in writing about signing this, this is, the police are your protection, uh, for you, the people, not.
I'm pretty sure it does say in the policy that they need to follow all safety protocols and whatever else might be necessary. After we look at what's on their application and what they're doing.
Then we'll know which direction they go in.
Then we'll know if they have to go the special events route, which could then potentially trigger the police detail.
Yeah.
Uh, the one fifty, when back when it was that, was there a, a time limit set on that? Like how long they were there for?
No, it was a flat price, cause we had talked at one point about maybe breaking things down, like if people wanted tables and chairs, we would charge extra, and if they wanted garbage collection, we would charge extra, et cetera.
Correct, so.
Um, and so then somebody suggested.
Trying to make it easy.
Fifty, and it just, it, it seemed to be restrictive.
Well, wait to get somebody full time.
As far as, you know, encouraging what the mission of the pavilion is, it's supposed to be for community to use it. And a hundred and fifty dollars for a lot of, you know, the groups that would wanna use it is, is a little bit expensive.
Yeah. How much does it get used? Just, I mean, on average, like, I mean, obviously, it doesn't get used much in the winter.
It gets used more for meetings than it does parties, I guess, is the other thing. We've only had, what, one party this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, one private party, and then the other things have been, uh, the Easter seals came in, they did something, the Bodhi Busters had done the, um, fundraiser.
Yeah.
I think God much has done some stuff here for. Well, yeah, cause it relates has their meeting here.
A meeting.
Yeah.
So I mean.
It's not, it's not like it's being.
No.
No, it's, it's maybe eight or ten times, but.
And horrible meetings and nonprofits, so.
Any? I mean, we can always change the fee amount if it becomes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we just gotta see how it works out, doesn't work out, they change it.
I got, I'm, I'm only pieces of paper. So my thing was, I think it was in regards to the mill, it had a list of not permitted uses.
It's in the policy.
I know, there it is, okay, I just spread everything out and now I'm lost. Um, private events for individuals such as birthday parties, showers, et cetera, I get that for the birthday parties and stuff. Um, but I did have somebody, um, ask once about if they would be allowed to use a space in the mill for a gathering after a funeral. Because if you weren't affiliated with the church, there really wasn't any other place in the area that they could gather. The only problem with that, okay, is now we're dealing with food, they could be bringing food in, um, dropping food, then it's now it's gonna be cleanup. You know, it's gonna be rug cleaning, floor cleaning, if you choose to do that, you're, and believing nothing against kids. But then you're going to have that whole scenario, um, you know, just, we deal with it at church downstairs, you know, but it's, it's, um, a tile floor, it's not rug floor. I mean, we have to take that into consideration, um, you know, if we start allowing people to have luncheons, food type of things, it's a maintenance.
Especially if they do it on a weekend where we don't have anyone in the building to pick up the trashes and stuff.
Maybe somebody can open it up.
Guidance comes from you guys, you know, of what we said for the proposed uses of it just being, you know, the nonprofits, the communities, the boards, and not having it for any parties or gatherings or any, or like that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, here we are, you know, we're having a luncheon for our town employees, but we're, it's outside, you know, it's not in the building for that same thing. Well, yeah, but we had Cynthia's retirement party in there, so it's, you know, the time of year type deal, so that's all, that was just my thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's town, a town events as well.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, alright, any other questions at this point? And again, you know, Sharon, this is not in stone, we can always, if we find, what?
The only thing I do need is your decision on the mill pen stock room for the, uh, is this one just for the, um, your nonprofits or is these for the different?
That would be like for, so the to, the top one, this one would be like for an individual use, like a one-off. And then this would be for regular use where like.
So the section where it says, uh, mill pen stock for a monthly, annual use, those would be if you want to, you know, assign fees to the book club. Gottlun for doing, um, their monthly meetings, um, the baseball organization, anyone else who's not a town affiliated to use the space.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, they are using heat, electricity.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
B C, garbage, um, if we want to assign a monthly fee or an annual fee, I mean, we brought them, you know, the su, and these are suggestions, and you guys let me know, whether it be fifty bucks a year, five, which equates down to.
Sixteen, yeah.
Four a month, or five dollars a month, or a hundred, or whatever you guys wanna start at.
I've never been too big on charging nonprofits, but I see the reason behind it.
They can all request waivers for these as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
Even if you set a fee like this, there is the option for any nonprofit to request a waiver for the fees and or the deposit if possible.
Okay, alright, I guess it's a starting point.
Which one would you like to start? The fifty dollars a month, the five dollars, um.
Fifty a year, not.
Fifty a year.
I think the, the fifty a year, I mean, I don't know, it's a guessing game.
I mean, like you said, I mean, it's four bucks, four dollars and sixteen cents a month.
Yeah.
I say, if anything, you start with giving basically. The option of the first two, cause like some boards would be easier just to pay the year and be done with it, but some might just do it monthly, cause they might end up having to close.
Like the Gott, sure, like the Gottlun program uses it once a month for their board meetings, where like the softball organization might only meet three or four months out of the year or something like that. So, you know, probably having a monthly and then a yearly might be. Yeah, go with the first two.
So you wanna go with first two, the fifty per year and the, or, and or the five per month, depending on how many months.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, and again, it's a place to start, um, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And I do have a motion, right, if you put it in there?
Yes.
Do you do? Oh, alright, I'll make the motion to, to approve the facilities use policy and fee schedule as presented.
And then I do have the, um, policy for your signature to make it official that it's been amended.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion passes. Um. One second, we have to update this, then, I'll just get a little.
You ain't gonna sign this?
I will, I, go ahead. You win, and I'll get it on the way back, then I'll just hold. Okay, our next, um, order of business is the Underwood contract for the sewer line technical assistance.
On our last meeting, I brought forward that, um, the request to, um, seek the assistance of our engineer. Engineering company, Underwood Engineers, who asked that, and I get a quote on how much that, um, assistance would be, so they have provided me with the, um, request of services. And their quote right now is at seven thousand five hundred, um, and this aligns with what they would provide us.
And obviously, the reasoning for this is, is that, for lack of, for lack of not mixing words, the state is trying to shove down a complete line from Tilton to the substation on South Road. All at once, they won't consider phasing it, they won't consider slip lining, um, and our feeling is from what we've, Craig's got some information, um, Alicia got some information. Our feeling is, is that it's in our best interest to have someone that is far more knowledgeable about, um, engineering groundwork, whatever. To, um, do a study on the town's behalf before, um, the state just says, which they've kind of already said, you have no choice. But we want someone representing our town. Um, we do have, um, monies in our sewer, for, in our capital that would cover this. So it's not coming out, well, in a roundabout way, it is coming from user fees, but it is monies that we have been putting away, unfortunately, for this type of project. But I think we've kind of been back and forth and feel that, um, the. But I think we've kind of been back and forth and feel that, um, the, the woman that we've, hasn't attended any meetings other than on Zoom from the state has pretty much said that they're gonna do it the way they want to and, um, we're just not comfortable with that scenario. And so that is a whole reason for doing this. Yeah, seventy-five hundred dollars, but I think it's monies that is in our best interest because we need someone representing the town in regards to this, because I believe the last, the last figure was, what was the last figure? Pricewise, to do the whole thing, I can't even, yeah, nine million, nine, nine million, and that was the last figure, so it could be up to ten or twelve by the time this ever was to happen. And, um, I think I'd prefer to spend seventy-five hundred dollars to look out for us and our taxpayers and our users before we get hit with the nine million dollar.
I was gonna say, even if they come back and say, yeah, you guys have to do it, I'd feel better spending the money now, being told from our engineers that, yeah, it is right, than just being forced a nine million dollar bill.
Yeah. Right, because we don't know. I mean, we're, and.
I think we owe that to the rate they're, if you, you know.
Right. I think I'd feel comfortable, I feel, I wouldn't feel so, you know, if, if I saw them out there doing test borings or testing or whatever, but there's been nothing. There's been nothing, so, um, can I have a, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we support the seventy-five hundred dollars to Underwood Engineering to look at our forced main sewer project.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, that passes. Mill drainage project update. Craig?
Yes. So we're about ninety percent done.
Yeah.
We discovered some deficiencies in the original drainage that was put in from the hole. So basically, what we found is there, there was some, there was some perforated pipe, um, but, you know, it was done probably thirty years ago, whenever it was done twenty years ago, played by the. It was, uh, the, the fabric that they used to contain the pipe and stuff, it, you know, it's not what they make today.
Sure.
It was kind of contaminated, so that the water wasn't flowing to the pipe. And I mean, I mean, when you put, when you put, um, perforated pipe, there needs to be an previous layer and then you put your pipe down, then you put your stone. So there was, there was a lot of stone underneath that perforated pipe, so that the water was actually being able to go way deeper than it should. So, uh, what we did is, this section here wasn't that bad, so we, we, we redid the section. We, we were able to actually save some of the pipes, we could have two runs instead of just one, and we went into that basin. The pipe on this side of the building, because this is the north side, this is the cold side, so this was where the real problem was. And on the, on the north side of the building, next to Donna's entrance, um, we found two pieces of pipe that were actually collapsed and broke. So all the water that was being contained, uh, on this side of the building, uh, was trying to make its way on the left-hand side down here and it was getting, it just couldn't go anywhere. So that was, I think that was one of the big problems. So not only did I think that, so we kept that original line going that way, but we also added a line going to the basin. Um, because my fear is that the north side of the building, the cold side of the building, we could have some freezing problems. So, you know, we get a lot of, um, we get a lot of sun on this side of the building, so my, we ran, we ran one separate section to the basin over here at the corner.
Separate from what's over there.
Separate from that, and so we have two, we have two buildings, so if that, if there is something going on with that, we got that.
Cause there's a lot of water that comes off in this roof, when it melts especially.
When you take a square footage, you know, you've got a small parking lot here.
Yep.
So, um, I think, I think what we've done, we, we, I told you my original plan, we kinda stuck with that, but a lot of work, a lot of handwork. We rented and excavated for a week, which, I mean, it helped tremendously, but, um, a lot of, um, a lot of wiring, a lot of drainage, a lot of
Stuff in the ground.
Irrigation, I should say, a lot of things in the way, I mean, it was just.
And how did you address the entrance, uh, for Donna's door? Because it was kind of.
Uh, we actually, we came down and on the, um.
I haven't been out too long.
Side of Donna's door, we put in like a little, kind of like a little catch basin with some stone, so, but I, I really don't think, I, I think if we replace the door, I think, I think replacing that door and putting that weather seal on.
Yep.
Helped, helped a lot of the groundwater. There is, I mean, there isn't a lot of groundwater on that side.
That comes down.
It's, it's this, the square footage of this parking lot that's over our heads, that is the main problem, so.
Awesome.
I mean, yeah, like, so we're ninety percent done, we got a little, um, cleanup to do, we got a little, um, you know, longings and seedings. We're just gonna make it look like, try to make it look like we weren't there.
Yep.
And I think I'm right on budget, so.
Good, awesome.
Probably about forty-five dollars.
Awesome. Well, if, if it, if it solves the water problem, that's huge, obviously.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna help.
Good.
Looks good too.
Yeah, it came out, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the guys do really good work, with their pussy and, I, I, I think, I can't say enough good about my crew, so, but it's just.
Awesome, alright, good, alright. Thank you. And it was a good time to do it because it's dry. It's good for that, yeah.
Yeah, it was, um, yeah.
Alright, we're not gonna do the pens stock park tree removal quote, um, we're gonna skip over that. Now we have New Hampshire DOT public meeting on the Main Street and Route one forty intersection. I got all excited yesterday, I came through and there were yellow flashing lights and I'm like, oh, the state's really here doing something, they're painting the lines, anymore.
So I have, um, the, the meeting notice that the state had sent out to me, this is a public informational meeting, this will be September twenty-sixth in this room at six P M.
Yep.
Um, but the doors will open at five thirty and the doors will open for informal viewing of presentation materials. Uh, six o'clock will be the presentation, seven P M will be question and answers, and seven-thirty we'll adjourn. It will be live streamed on our YouTube channel and I also have a Zoom link, um, there's more information in here. Anyone wants to go to the info at D O T dot N H dot com, um, so it's open to the public for questions, concerns, viewing. Mrs. Dr. Colleen has already put this on the website and I believe we emailed this to the newsletter group, or we can?
I, I don't think we did yet, cause it's still a little ways away, but, uh, I don't know.
Got a couple weeks.
I don't know, we sent some other stuff.
No, it's next week.
I will check on that.
Yeah, it's next week. Well, hopefully someone will show up, especially those that have had near misses on the Main Street.
Right, and, and I would hope that those, uh, live in that area and, and town show up to any CD options, voice, or.
Yep, yep, we've been pushing for this for over ten years.
Yeah, so.
Alright, okay. Um, do we have any other old business?
Um, no, I just want to, um, encourage you guys with your lovely Jem Pass calendar for next month. That starts our budget meeting discussions as well as our board meetings, so we pair two meetings, um, to start the budget meetings after, um, they are public. We do, um, so we're in the live stream, so those are there for you. We will have two-day meetings for the budget and one, two, three night meetings.
So no one should be able, so, so no one should complain about not knowing what the budget is for the town, because we have these night meetings that can attend.
Correct, and then these are the board meetings, and then in November starts the budget committee meetings, the same thing, just to.
The budget committees are all at night.
Yeah, and those are all at night at six thirty.
And we are still in need of a budget committee.
Yep, I'm working on that, trying to, yeah, yeah, we've had no one.
I have had no.
No, all these people that complained about the budget, but nobody wants to sit on the budget committee, isn't that interesting?
Everybody wants to go to heaven, nobody wants to die.
You got it, yep, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to get that word out, I've got a couple.
Um, the agendas will be posted for the, um, budget meeting, Charlie, when are you posting those? Probably the end of this week, so they'll be, all the agendas will be posted.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, yep, still a little early.
I'm trying, I'm trying to put it in the family though, you know?
Okay, um, do we have, no other old business? Do we have any public comment?
No. I just wanna note that, um, today is our employee appreciation, um, day, we have our wellness, health and wellness for the employees, as well as a lunch provided, so if you're honored, you're welcome to come to us for lunch at, um, twelve. And town hall is closed from twelve to one, so that employees can just enjoy an unreserved lunch for, um, their appreciation.
Awesome. They've, they've been dealing with a lot this past year, that's for sure.
Yes.
Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for October second, October second, um, ten o'clock right here. And we've already done our non-public, so I will consider a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
What's that tall timber's thing in there for?
Well, that was, no, we had skipped over that, that was for the pens stock.
Oh, that, oh, that was the pens stock.
Yeah, and that's way, way too high, way too high.
Uh, I thought.
We're, we're still live.
Yeah, that's okay.